This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilman Harris.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Councilman Avery is absent today. Councilman Eccles.
Here.
Stewart.
Here.
Cannon.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
We have a quorum present. The meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Phil Swindle to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the many blessings that you've given us. Thank you for this holiday that we celebrated yesterday in appreciation of those who labor on the behalf of our country and on behalf of the companies within our nation to support our economy. Father, we thank you for these men who gather here each week to make decisions for this city. God give them the wisdom they need to make the proper decisions, not just for today, but for many years down the road. Father, give us all a sense of appreciation for the fact that we are born in the greatest nation in the world, and Father, that we can only remain the greatest nation in the world as long as we rely on you. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for
Chair, entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and council meeting held on August 28th.
So moved.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Chair, entertain a motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the week of August of, April, August of 24th through the 30th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation, fair. Unfinished business, we have none. Number nine, this is a time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution approving issuance of an alcoholic beverage license. Twisted Ventures doing business as Twisted Ultra Lounge has applied for a Class One retail lounge liquor license at 504 Broad Street in District Three. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor of it? Chair, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Ten is a resolution authorizing application to Federal Transit Administration for federal financial assistance for transportation projects. Chair, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
This is for our, our dark in our trolley transportation. I think the federal governments do, I think they do 80% of the capital improvements, 50% of the operating cost of our transit system, so this is what this is about.
Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Eleven is a resolution authorizing community policing agreement. This continues the agreement with the Greater Gadsden Housing Authority through September 2013 for five officers at the rate of up to $17.12 per hour, which is reimbursed to the city. Chair, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Twelve is a resolution authorizing service maintenance agreement with Physio Control Incorporated. This is a renewal of an existing yearly contract for the service maintenance on the 15 Life Pack units. The amount is $8,035.91, which will, is included in the fiscal year 2013 budget. Chair, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Thirteen is a resolution authorizing service maintenance agreement with Physio Control Incorporated. This is a renewal of the existing yearly contract for the service maintenance on the automated external defibrillator units. Chair, the amount is $2,023, which will be included in the fiscal year 2013 budget. Chair, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Is there any discussion?
Both of these are for the fire department. I think the chief explained what they were early in our pre-council meeting.
Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business, is there any new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have a resolution I'd like to ask for unanimous consent to consider is authorizing a license agreement with the Fish Market Restaurant of Gadsden Incorporated for the Memorial Bridge on Broad Street. Ask for unanimous consent to consider it this morning.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Now, last for passage, please.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
This is, we're going to ask Kay Moore to explain it when she comes up a little bit later and starts talking about First Friday, but it's closing the Memorial Bridge for a sunset festival of some kind, and things are going to be real interesting, so that's all I have.
Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any other new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have, I have a few items here. There are actually three, one ordinance and three resolutions that I'd like to ask for consideration today. I'd bring it up at once. They're involving the emergency solutions grant in the amount of $200,000.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance and the three resolutions today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted to consider all the items.
Okay, move to adopt.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir. So the ordinance again is amending the fiscal year 2012 budget to reflect receipt of an emergency solutions grant, which is the historical emergency shelter grant in the amount of $200,000. And there's a resolution identifying and appropriating the monies for each group that is to receive the grant amounts. 13th Place will receive $90,000. The Salvation Army will receive $85,000, and the Love Center will receive $25,000. So I think these amounts, if I'm not mistaken, are consistent with the historical appropriations as it relates to these grant funds.
Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance and the three resolutions, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt all four items.
Is there any other new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have one final item. It's an ordinance amending City Code Section 10292 regarding insurance premium rates for retirees. I ask that we consider this today.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, this, I'll defer to the mayor.
I want, no, I can't. Go ahead, I found a proclamation.
This, this ordinance speaks to a discussion item that has been, that we've been reviewing for several weeks. It involves the, those retired spouses that were actually, that were actually adversely impacted by an ordinance that the, that the city had passed several, several months ago. So this is a compromise solution of sorts that helps to address that group of individuals and gives, gives them an option and some level of subsidy as it relates to insurance premiums. So as we discussed during pre-council, I really believe that this is a, this is a balanced approach. It, it speaks to both the fiscal responsibility that we have as elected officials, but it also adheres to some level of compassion. And I think the mayor's office is to be commended for the level of research and diligence that they put into this item, because I can think of a number of cities who would have, who would have just turned away and not given it any consideration. So, and I do want to thank the folks that presented their issue, because they, they presented it both reasonably and respectfully, and that's always important. I think I would have done the same thing had I been in their position, so.
Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any other new business? You got a proclamation, Mayor, we can just come over and give it there. You've got a big proclamation.
I know. I asked Ms. Denise Cooley with EMA to come up, please. Whereas National Preparedness Month creates an important opportunity for every resident of Gadsden to prepare their homes, businesses, and communities for any type of emergency, from natural disasters to potential terrorist attacks. Investing in the preparedness of ourselves, our families, businesses, and communities can reduce fatalities and economic devastation in our communities and in the nation. The Gadsden-Edgewall County Emergency Management Agency and other federal, state, local, private, and volunteer agencies are working to increase public awareness concerning the importance of preparing for emergencies and to persuade individuals to take action. Emergency preparedness is a responsibility of every citizen of Gadsden, and all citizens are urged to make preparedness a priority by taking four simple steps. One, get an emergency supply kit. Two, make a family emergency plan. Three, be informed about the types of emergencies that occur in Gadsden. And four, get involved with the local preparedness organizations in their effort. Therefore, be it resolve our Sherman-Gotten Mayor of the City of Gadsden hereby proclaim September 2012 National Preparedness Month and encourage all citizens and businesses to develop their own emergency preparedness plan. And I'd like to say that I think we've got one of the best EMA groups in the whole state of Alabama, because they're always on the ball, and every time you go down there, it's amazing, all the equipment that they have and all the technology. And it is amazing to me, because I don't know anything about technology.
Thank you so much, Mayor. September is always National Preparedness Month, and we want to encourage everyone to be prepared. We have several things going on at EMA. We're working with the state and FEMA. On September 6th, there'll be a State Ready Day, Ready Alabama Day. There'll be over 50 responders there that will demonstrate their capabilities, plus bring awareness to the public. That's from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Also, your EMA is holding CERT classes, which is Community Emergency Response Teams. This is teams that are formed throughout the county, which we already have a good many through the years formed. These are citizens just like you and me that learn to respond to emergencies, because the fact is, in any given emergency, you're going to be your first responder before help can get to you. So this is a class, it starts October the 2nd, and it goes through the 16th. We meet two nights a week at EMA from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. It's free to the public. We give you some tools to get started on making your response kit, and it's, it's very vital that you know these things, because like I said, you will be the one that will respond first, and it could be hours before they could get to you. So we'd just like to thank you and encourage you all to prepare for any emergency. That's not just tornadoes, that can be fire, search and rescue, and we appreciate it.
Okay, is there any other department reports, committees, boards?
Thank you, Council President, and Councilman Stewart, I'll go ahead and talk about sunset sets a little bit before I start on First Friday, how about that? Several of my board members and other people have long said that other cities use their bridge to have entertainment on their bridge, and we've got actually three bridges, but we're going to use the Memorial Bridge on October 16th, and we'll, we're going to close the bridge. The event will be from 5:30 to 7:30, and we'll watch the sunset. We'll have the fish market, we'll be doing the catering, and we'll have adult beverages also, we'll have security there to make sure nobody gets crazy, but we're just going to have a good time, I think, with that. This will be a fundraiser for Downtown Gadsden Incorporated. For, I've been there almost five years. Actually, October 15th will be my fifth anniversary, so I guess we'll celebrate my anniversary too. I hadn't thought about that. But for that time, only during Christmas time do we have banners on those, on those light poles downtown. So what we'd like to do is raise money to buy banners for that. We've got a new little slogan. It's shop, sip, eat, play, and learn local. So I'd like to maybe have some rotating banners that, that focus on all of those things that we're doing downtown. So October 16th tickets will be, we're thinking $40 apiece, and just come and enjoy, and we'll have some entertainment stationed around the bridge with maybe some guitars and some violins and maybe mimes and that sort of thing. Still working out all the details, but it's actually six weeks from today. So thank you for that passage on that, and we'll, we'll hope, we'll get, we'll get working on that. We're not going to be embarrassed at the end when we're not ready to go. But that will be, that's, that's going to be one thing. It'll be totally different, so it's going to be a lot of fun. This Friday, of course, is First Friday, and that's what I'm here to talk about today. We've got, this September is the Dune Buggies, the Beatles, and the Buses that'll be just on display in the 600 block, and that's kind of in conjunction with a, a ride that they do every year, too. There's, last year, there was over 100 vehicles that rode through the canyon, a cure. They're looking for a cure, a pediatric brain tumor. It's an event for a cure for that. Bailey Phillips, who's, her parents own the fish market. This is going to start at the fish market on Saturday morning, and they're, they're riding and raising money for, looking for a cure for, for that. So that's going to be a lot of fun for them, but come on Sa, on Friday night to see those buses, buggies, and beetles, and, and it's just a lot of fun. You kind of feel like you've stepped back into time. So that, that's going to be great. We've got a lot of music. Fifth and Broad will have One Ton Tomato, and that's a couple of professors from Jacksonville State, Jimmy Henderson, who works for the city, is also in that group, and they're, they're very, very good. Five Foot Something will be at BB&amp;T, and then we've got Kate Falcon and a group that's playing in front of, at 301 Broad Street, and then we've got the Cheryl School of Rock, which is the kids that'll be in front of Alpha down that way. So a lot of great entertainment. Of course, we've got the Dancing in the Streets at Sixth and Broad. You're welcome to come and park at the, at the Carpet Store, Foot Brothers Carpet One there, and that's a great parking lot for, for, to get into and out of. One thing different, the Southern Security Specialist is giving away a security system you can register for. That's in the 100 block, so stop by and see them, too. Then after First Friday, well, and of course, I should say, you know, we've got lots of shopping, the stores will have some great shopping deals, and that's what First Friday is all about. I so often tend to forget that, but First Friday started six years ago, and it's a shopping event. That's what, that's what the focus is. All the others, the classic cars, we appreciate them coming downtown, they bring more people to do more shopping, so come down and shop, shop, eat, sip, play, learn. Every year, about this time, and Andy and I had this discussion, this is not the last First Friday. First Friday technically goes year-round, so no, if you hear that, that is not true. However, it is the last summer concert series of 2012. So at 9:00 at the, at the amphitheater, we'll have, oh man, wait, I'll have to look, Dr. Zarr's Amazing Funk Monster. Now, it was in the paper this morning, if you didn't see the picture, it is amazing. These guys come dressed in costume. It, it's going to be a fun, fun concert, so lots of movement, lots of dancing, lots of good times on that, so that's going to be from 9:00 to 11:00. But it is the last summer concert of, of the season, so we'll have that to, to end up First Friday, but First Friday will be going on again in October, November, December, so don't let anybody tell you it's the last one, because it's not. Well, we go through this every year, but looking for a good time, hoping the weather's going to kind of clear up for us, and maybe be a little cooler. I'm appreciative of the rain that we had all day yesterday, I didn't have to do anything on my day off, so that was very good. But come out and see us, First Friday, we'll close the streets about 4:30, it starts at 6:00. Lots of great food, shopping, entertainment, so come on down.
Where is the concert series?
The concert series is at the amphitheater. I'm sorry, at the amphitheater next to 90 Walnut Street is the address on that, so you can come on, you can walk on down there, drive on down there, and it's going to be a lot of fun.
Free?
Lot of fun. Free, absolutely free, thanks to our sponsors, so yes.
I got to know the name of that band that's going to be there.
Dr. Zarr's Amazing Funk Monster.
Wow.
You can thank Hugh Stump for this one, for the tourism. He has seen these people several times, and he says they are wonderful.
With a name like that, they are?
Dr. Zarr's Amazing Funk Monster. Look at the picture in the paper this morning, you're going to see, it's going to be a lot of fun.
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there any other department reports? Okay, remarks by the mayor and the council. Mayor, you want to start this morning?
I'm good, I guess, yeah. I'm okay, I don't have it. I'm talking enough.
You talking enough? Billy, have you talked enough?
Not quite.
No more.
We, the major thing, you know, that, that I really had to say today was spoken during pre-council, and, and that's the passage of the ordinance, you know, that we have corrected something that we thought was very important that we get corrected, so, and I won't, I won't rehash that, because I think we've all spoken enough. I think everybody's pleased and everybody's satisfied, so we'll move on. I just want to give this tidbit of information that we have been successful in having the speed limit reduced to 25 miles an hour on Baden Ridge, and the signing is there, and I just want to caution everybody that's taken a shortcut through the community to slow down, because after a period of time that those new postings have been there, and everybody should realize who's coming through for that shortcut, I'm going to ask that we have special ops get out there and set up and, and make sure that people that are coming through our community, our neighborhood are abiding by the speed laws. It's been a time, it's been some while getting it done, and we want to put some teeth into it to make sure that it's effective. At the same time, I also encourage everybody to slow down in the speed, in, in the school zones. Slow down in all the speed, school zones. It's just, it's just unnecessary. It's really, it's really embarrassing to see the way some people and the way some commuters are driving in our, in our school districts, in our school areas, when kids are in and out of school, so this is a short period of time, you know, and if you have to go through that during that time, please obey the speed limit so that our children can be safe, you know, when they're crossing the streets. That's all I have, thank you.
Avery?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of quick items. I do want to congratulate the Gadsden City Titans football team for big victory this weekend, or this, this past Friday. They defeated Florence High School 30 to 28, a little bit more of a nail-biter than most of us would like, but it's a win. They, I think they traveled to Huntsville this week, play at Milton Frank Stadium against Lee Hot, Lee High School, and it's actually going to be a Saturday game, if I'm not mistaken, because of some scheduling issues. Is it Thursday? Moved to Thursday, okay. So it's not a Friday, it's a Thursday game, all right? So, so those of us that can support that and go out and support the Titans, and let's please do. I know it's a bit of a road trip, but one thing I would like to say as it relates to that, it's just important as a community that we get behind everything that school does. Those kids need us, and they need our support, so please, please get behind everything that they're doing as, as young people. The last thing, and again, not to belabor the point, but I did one, I promised Lisa that I would speak to this, and she didn't ask me to, but one of the things that got us engaged, or that started the discussion about insurance premiums, was the fact that, you know, when I took office, we, we were at about 72% of our general fund budget as it relates to personnel costs. And you've heard me say this before, that's just foolish, and it's not, not wise from a fiscal standpoint, and how we got there is debatable, but, but, but we have a responsibility as elected officials to get out from under something like that. That contributed to a $106 million encumbered number, and I, you know, Shane helped me, but, but I, you know, that's, that's, that's a scary figure, and it, it prevents us from being healthy enough to do a lot of the things that we like to do and want to do as a city as it relates to commercial recruitment, industrial recruitment, and a number of things. So we have to be very careful, you know, in terms of what we take on as it relates to expenses. So as I said earlier, I'll say it again, I think this, the approach that we took today was very balanced from a fiscal standpoint and a compassionate standpoint, so again, I want to thank all those who contributed. That's all I have.
I'd like to thank this council for, this is the first council that we've had that realized what we were doing to ourselves, and we passed a law, went to court, 91, I'll say it again, and then we just ignored it, and it's gotten us into a situation where we could go bankrupt, and if we did, then then talk about benefits, there wouldn't be any benefits, including pensions. So I'm really happy with what was done today and what has been done in the way of trying to be physically responsible. Bill?
I'd just like to make a comment. You, you can ride through the south, and you see a lot of cities our size that with their downtown boarded up. A few years ago, we were headed to 70-something percent occupancy downtown. I think we're in 90 now, so just want to commend the K and downtown merchants for what they do, and remind everybody that if you shop a local merchant, 80% of your money stays here in the city. It's very important, so let's, let's shop our local people. That's all I can say.
Johnny?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do want, thank everyone that came out last night to Music on Me, and it did rain, but we did have a good crowd, and we gave out of food as usual. The entertainment was just great. We've got one more series of concerts down there that starts the 22nd, I believe, third Saturday in this month, and that'll be the last one for this until next year, but I just want to thank everybody that came and all the entertainers that were there last night. That's all we got.
Ben?
I just want to just recognize EMA again and congratulate them for the recognition. I think sometimes we have a tendency to forget about EMA until a tragedy occurs or disaster happens, and then we all get excited. I think that training coming up is very important, and keeping EMA out on the front where people know and can see what they do, but again, I want to say thank you all. I think also the police and fire departments, sometimes, same thing, until you need them, they're kind of on the sideline. So I would like this morning to ask that the citizens really show some support to the people in EMA and show some support, fire police and our firemen. Let them know it, they're out there every day, and they're on call, and they're there to protect us, they're our first line of defense. Everybody I name, our first line of defense. You better know them and recognize them and support them, and I appreciate it.
Okay, due to the Labor Day holiday, Monday's garbage will be picked up today, and Tuesday's route will be collected Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday's route will be made the regular schedule. I'll entertain a motion, we adjourn. Meetings adjourned. Meeting's adjourned.